We'll call this regular monthly board meeting to order. Would you please rise for the prayers? Subway.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening grateful for a very good first semester of teaching and learning in our schools. As the semester comes to a close and we break for the holidays, we pray for the safety of all of our students and staff during the upcoming break. We ask that you specifically look after those who are traveling. Thank you for the many blessings upon our family this past semester, and we look forward to your guidance as we return in 2016. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Campbell, would you listen to the prayers?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you call the roll, please? Subway and the vote change.
Mrs. Acevedo?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Mr. England?
Here.
Ms. Lemoine?
Here.
Ms. Daisart?
Here.
Dr. Craft?
Here.
Dr. Lewis and Mr. Longer not with us. Mr. Nikosia?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Okay, it's obviously no one has a community concern because we don't have anyone out there, and I don't think it's Ms. Bloom. We'll just keep her on the agenda. Moving forward, Larry, I'll ask any board members, do you have any personal privileges that you want to entertain at this time? All right, here none. We'll go to Agenda Item Five, Update on Chalmette High Accessory Building Construction. Mr. Carey?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is going to be a big update on this.
Very quick.
Here we go. This will be. The slab is done and the drainage is done. The steel, we're waiting for the steel building to arrive, and it's not coming until January the 4th. So it's going to look like this until the building arrives, but it'll take, in a week, the building will be in place. So there really is not much to report at this point, waiting for the building to arrive. The, it's set to be complete by April, which is the time period we gave them. So once the building, it's a steel engineered building, so we can't do anything until the building comes in, and it takes a while to fabricate. But everything will come in at one time, all of the siding, the roof, everything. It's all been ordered. So on January 4th, right after the New Year, we have our fingers crossed, the building will arrive and be constructed. So that's, I'm afraid I don't have much more of an update than that.
(laughter)
Any questions about it? You can see they've done all the site work and all that's done. I mean, they've used their time waiting for the building to complete all the work around there.
How many square feet is it?
It is 2675 square feet.
That's pretty good size.
When are they going to use it for store? What are they going to store in it again? What is it going to?
I don't know that. Probably ground, stuff at the grounds, maybe some athletic equipment. It's right at the end of the visitor's bleachers, so it's up close, you can see the track and field and all around there, so it's probably going to have a lot of sporting stuff in it as well, maybe some lawn mowers.
Right, it'll be lawn equipment, it'll be athletic storage, but it'll also be some club storage?
Right.
As well, that they don't have room for in the building itself.
It has a mezzanine, so you'll be able to put a lot of stuff inside that building. It has high ceiling, so you can store.
How high is the building going to be? Like a two-story building?
Yeah. It's like two stories, that's what it is. But it has a mezzanine?
Right.
And part of it, so you have height to put stuff.
Okay, that's fine.
That's, yeah. You can see it's just slab, okay? And we just?
I thought you were finished.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
You can see what it's going to look like. It's just very simple. You know, here's the big, this faces the driveway, so it's going to be a big overhead door and then a pedestrian door to get in. And the side, this faces, this is the side from the football field, so it's brick on the first floor and then steel above it with a steel roof that matches the, Chalmette maroon, matches all the rest of the buildings around there. And so the floor plan is just a big open space with doors at either end, so you can go through the building and then you can see the stairs up to the mezzanine.
You can drive through the building?
Well, if you, you know, you might even have to get out of either end.
Okay.
Climate control, too?
It has some climate control, not, you know, it's not going to be perfectly climate controlled, but it has ventilation and some air conditioning in it.
Any other questions?
There it is. That's it.
Just thank you. But that's the giant step. Once you get that foundation, it's all downhill from there.
Yeah, well, that was the big, you know, all, everything, all down to ground, everything is there, so.
That's great.
It's ready to go, just waiting for the steel to arrive. Excuse me.
That'd be, that'd be nice to have. Good, good utility building. We appreciate all your work there, Mr. Carey. Thank you so much for all you do.
Okay. Any questions about the building?
Any other questions?
Just what I said, I thought I could hear you. Yeah, mostly.
Um, you know, Ms. Daisart asked me to explain again the things that'll be stored there, but it's, it'll be mostly athletic equipment. There are those big pieces and such that are out on the track and all that you see. There will be storage for clubs from the school proper, they'll have spaces for that, and there'll be lawn care equipment for the maintenance of all those outdoor or outer facilities instead of, because there's no place really inside the building to store those types of pieces of equipment.
And a lot of the track and field equipment is just left outside, so that all can be brought in now.
Yeah, and that's not good.
Right.
Yeah, how enough for Jack's little cart?
There's, there's, yeah. Carts and, you know, the cart you see that goes around. There's never, ever enough storage in any school. Ask any teacher, principal, staff member, there's never enough storage, no matter how much you build in, with what is accumulated over a period of time. Ask Mr. Cassar with the cultural arts building and every other spot that he takes. You know, with, with all of, there's just never enough space.
Thank you much, Mr. Carey. We appreciate it.
Thank you, and have a Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas to you. Item Six on the agenda, motion to incorporate the December 2015 General Committee Report into the minutes of the December regular monthly meeting.
Second.
Got a move over there by Mr. Warner, second by Ms. Daisart. Okay. Any questions about this? Vote your machines.
Motion passes nine zero. Ms. Daisart? Okay, nine zero.
Yeah. Item Seven on the agenda is personnel changes for December 2014. You have some highlighted there that's come about since the committee meeting. If you peruse that, then we'll move on. Any observation statements relative to the personnel changes? Okay, there's no action required here, so we'll move on to Item Eight, motion to approve the resolution regarding early return of test results and test items. That was recommended by the committee. We do have a?
Also move.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Second by Mr. England. And before we take a vote on the motion, we have the resolution, and we'll read it into the minutes.
Go ahead.
Okay? Okay. Whereas school leadership teams each summer spend time studying its student achievement data trends for the purposes of determining the effectiveness of instructional delivery and setting school goals for the coming school year, and whereas student achievement data is also used in scheduling students for accelerated honors and remedial class opportunities and is used in some cases to determine grade placement, and whereas spring student achievement scores are no longer returned to districts prior to the end of the school year and instead are delivered in October long past the start of the school year, and whereas the ability for teachers and administrators to have the opportunity to review actual test items included in tests and state assessments would provide specific evidence of how Louisiana grade level standards are interpreted by those who are constructing the assessments, now be it therefore resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board respectfully requests that the State Department of Education structure its statewide testing program in such a manner as to return aggregated as well as individual test results to school districts prior to the end of the school year, and be it further resolved that the department also release spring test items after each test administration so that there is transparency in the interpretation of Louisiana grade level standards by assessment, contractors, and teachers, therefore may be better prepared to provide students with the specific skills they need in order to meet successfully the standards set for, for their grade levels. We do have a motion and a second on that. Any discussion or comments?
Yes.
I'd just like to make some comment in conjunction with that. Because we had just received individual test scores very recently, the school performance scores and the district performance scores, obviously, which we normally get much earlier in the school year, will be coming out this week. We know that the state average for statewide assessment, because of the new, more complex testing, is going down a little bit. You know, our district performance score last year was a 99.7, and what we expect this year is one just about the same, maybe slightly lower, maybe a point or so lower, but that would be in keeping with what's happening around the state. So those scores should be released this week.
Will this be comparatively, speaking of the same type test, or is this a different test that they had the prior year than what was?
It was a different test, more rigorous test, more, more in line with the Common Core standards, and the rigor will increase even more in this coming year.
Yeah. So rigor is good in some cases, but some, it depends on the rigor. And of course, if it's an obstacle, or if it's something you've got to jump higher sometimes, that's not always fair. And of course, we've got to make sure we keep apprised of that. This is why I would like to be able to see the teachers, take a look of what test it is, how it's constructed, how the verbiage it is used, whether it's verbiage they use in Massachusetts, or what the vocabulary here is in Louisiana, and that, that can happen sometimes when you're expected to take a test and score, score well on it. A math problem on relay is not like one that's, would be considered on basketball and the score of football like that. So it depends on the familiarity with the test. Say, sometimes in an area that's, they do a great deal of bowling in, of course, St. Bernard doesn't have bowling alley, so sometimes it'd be a little artificial to be able to keep that score. Knowing what a turkey is and how to score that up to that point does make a world of difference. So, so again, we, we just need to know what information is on the test. I have problems with, some people say, you're teaching to the test. That's, that's, that's not fair. In other words, what, what you need to know is what standards you want to achieve, and these must be expressed somewhere in the teaching, learning situation throughout the school year. And I, I don't like surprises on tests, and sometimes can be a little devious the way they word these and the logic that they want you to use. And of course, we found that, and just the examples that was sent out, what was it, the Park Assessment Test? If the samples, you have questions about that and you have some doubts, then when you give that entire package to students and you really don't know, we, we're not asking to get the test in advance, we just want to see that test after it's been given and to be able to analyze those results, and is, is it fair, is it an effective test? And teachers, teachers usually spend four to six years in preparation to be a teacher, and they have these classes in how to effectively test and how to do item, item analysis and so forth, and the reliability of the test, and that's, that's all that they're wanting now, as they move forward, is to be given a fair shake on the test. We all know that you can drown in a river that's got an average depth of two feet, and of course, averages. For instance, if I had a great class of 20 students and they scored between 90 and 100 percent on the test, did you know that 10 of them would be below average? Because if you use the averages, it's, that's what I always say, if you either use a test to diagnose and to help students increase their knowledge and improve, or you can use a test as a weapon. And that's why we don't want this to happen at the state level, and we definitely don't want this to happen in Louisiana, in using it as a weapon. And we will, we want it to be fair and not too critical in what's presented to us. And this is a good resolution, and we will send it to the parties that we discussed, right?
Okay, right. And one, just one final statement in accordance with that, is the test, the state assessment we will take in April, the assessment guides for that are coming out today. So since we've been in school August, September, October, November, and part of December without the assessment guides for the test, which will be taken in April. So that's just an example of the implementation process that we have been living under. So, anyway.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Craft. Ms. Votay, when, tomorrow, or this week, we'll be getting the, the test, and the entire state will be getting their district test, right? So we'll be able to compare?
The scores, right, yes.
We'll be able to compare where we stand at the state level as opposed to last year also?
Yes.
Besides, okay. And then we won't be getting the individual students' scores?
We already have the individual students.
Individual students' scores.
We got those.
Okay, but this resolution that we're talking about is so that we can get the individual scores prior to, and we can use them during the school year?
Yes, ma'am.
When is the assessment committee, as defined by the legislature, going to convene? Because they're supposed to be convening to, to talk about the future test. Do you, do you know the date of that possibly?
Well, it's, it's kind of a cumbersome process. The, the problem that comes in with this is there's a push to have the state assessment, just like if you take a final exam. You really want to take it at the end of the semester. You don't want to take your final exam three quarters of the way through the semester. So there's one push to put the assessment back as far as possible toward the end of the year, so that you have a full year of instruction before you assess, which makes sense. Now, with the way assessments were graded prior to this school year, or the one that we're going to take now, there were two phases. Well, we did a phase in March, really early March, that had more of what we call constructed responses, which had to be, for lack of a better term, essay-type, where you had to actually subjectively score, you had to go through. And then toward the end, there was more of a multiple choice type test, which could be instantly scored. With the Common Core assessments, there is a move more to de-emphasize multiple choi- choice type options with much more writing, comparison, multi-level tests that have to be scored more by hand, or in accordance with the rubric that is more complex, if they were going to try to machine score it. So the later you take the test, the later you're going to get your results back. So I don't honestly think we're ever going to get back to, if we're keeping statewide assessments as complex as they are now becoming, that we will get results back prior to the end of any school year. We're hoping that we can get them back earlier in the summer so that we can analyze and get ready and prepare for the coming year based on the prior year's, the prior year's assessment. But what could happen and what should is that there needs to be more transparency in what tests are being given. There is no reason, just like when you administer the ACT or any of these nationally standardized tests, you can see what the test is after it's given. I mean, the, the items are released. So once we take these tests, we should be able to see what the items were, which will help inform planning for the coming year, as well as getting test results back much earlier, maybe in the early part of the summer, as opposed to sitting here in the month of October and then December, getting the results back. So if the state continues on the path of these more complex assessments, because kids don't just go in, I mean, a lot of people out there think, it's like many of those old tests that we took, even standardized, where you had a question and you picked A, B, C, or D, and then you moved on, it was easily scored. Very little of any of the tests are like that now. It's much more complex, it's multi-step, there's a lot more writing, a lot more analysis on it. It is, you've got third and fourth and fifth graders sitting there and very painstakingly going through this. So evaluating how they do is a much more difficult process to grade it at the end. And I tell you, you know, people talk about, oh, the good old days and what we used to know and what kids know. Take a look at these assessments that we give to third graders and fourth graders and fifth graders.
Smarter than ever.
And they are much more rigorous than anything we took when we were two or three grades ahead of them, you know, in our time or more. You'd be amazed at what kids are able to do now, you know, really would be. In fact, you've seen some of the items, and I bet you if we sat around, and I'm including myself here, and we gave ourselves, say, the, I don't know, eighth grade math test, well, I think I'd do okay on the eighth grade math test, but if we gave ourselves a seventh or an eighth grade state assessment, I bet you we wouldn't want anyone else grading or evaluating what we put down as answers.
We'd have to walk on a curve?
Yeah, we'd have to walk on a curve. We'd have to have a big curve, I think, you know, really, in all honesty, so.
Not the bell-shaped curve.
Yeah, as long as it's not bell-shaped.
Thank you, Ms. Votay, but my question, you know, is specifically the legislature with the Common Core and the evaluation process, Park versus any other test, or in their wisdom, they said that the Bessie and, and certain members would be meeting to discuss the, the following year's assessment, be it Park or other.
All right.
When will that take place? Do we have a timeline for that?
No, not for the assessment.
Okay.
The issue becomes right now, the issue becomes right now, the Review Standards Committee is meeting, they're reviewing the statewide standards. That report will be going to Bessie in February. They will then decide if the standards look good, will accept them or reject them from the committee. Then if Bessie accepts them, then they're, those standards are going to be sent, this was part of the legislative compromise, sent to the legislature for their up or down approval and the governor. Once the standards are approved, you can't decide on what the assessment's going to be until you have the standards in place. So we're going to be sitting here well after that period of time, probably not until the summer, until some type of an RFP is going to be put out for an assessment that will actually measure the standards. Now, the legislature may choose at some point during the session to mandate some things. I mean, there's legislation introduced each year to say, no Park testing, or yes, let's have Park testing, or make sure the assessment is comparable nationally. Well, right now, there aren't that many states left taking Park. So, and then if you, ACT is the gold standard, there's an ACT series that goes all the way down to third grade, which is called ASPIRE, which is, you know, some people argue, and it has some validity, if, if the gold standard is, in the 11th grade is doing well in the ACT, then why wouldn't we be assessing our kids third through 10th grade to see incrementally how they're working toward doing better to achieve that standard? So that is, none of that's going to be discussed until after the, the standards are stamped and says, here are the Louisiana standards. Now, once we have them, how are we going to assess them? So there's no set time that I know of, that any committee will be getting together to make those decisions. It won't happen until after those standards are set.
Thank you, Ms. Votay. So basically, we're, our testing system is a moving target.
Absolutely.
Year after year, correct?
Year after year, year after year.
It's a moving target, you know, as far as the decision by the state as to what the assessment is, you know, what the, what the objectives are for the assessment. So it's constantly changing.
Constant change.
Year by year. So it, not only is the testing difficult, but to know, you know, the standards that the state decides is questionable.
Even for this, for this year, because this was supposed to be the one-odd year until you got the standards, and then you could go out with a multi-year assessment. For this year, the legislature put into law, into the statutes, that Park items could be no greater than 49.9 percent of the test. Okay, however, the other 50.1 percent or more has to reflect the current standards, so it will probably be Park-like in nature. It might be pulled out of smarter balance, it might be pulled out of test item banks that are reflective of the Common Core that we know nothing about. So 51 percent of the items, or, you know, over 50 percent of the items have to be not from Park, per se. However, the question I asked, well, does that mean 49 percent of the score will come from Park and 51? Well, I think they're going to weight those 49 percent of the items greater than 49 percent. So while it'll be, it'll be more of the multi-level questions, which will be worth more in points, if you want to put it that way, it might be 60, 70 percent of your final score might come from those 49 percent of the items. We don't know that. After I look at the assessment guides, which came out today, I'll have a better idea, and so will our teachers. Now, what we plan to do is that we already have eight dates, beginning January 11th, where we're going to unpack those assessment guides with teachers that we're bringing in after school, just to make sure that between now and April, we feel we're on the right track with this in looking at what those assessment guides are and what we think the, what we think the assessment will look like. And we have invited all of our core And we have invited all of our core area teachers in grades three through eight to participate. So the more who do so, the better off it will be and we'll be forming that as the basis of continued discussions, you know, at the school level and adjustments to the daily lessons that we're going to have. So we've already put that invitation out to all of our core area third through eighth grade teachers.
That will take place after?
That will be taking place after school. We have a stipend, that we have a grant that we'll be able to pay them to come in and do that. And we don't want to exclude anyone, we want to include them all because that will build their capacity. And when they work together as a group collaboratively doing this, we'll get a better product. So we're hoping that with their, you know, with their schedules, because they've got children and other obligations and such after school, but we're hoping to get a really good, consistent working group coming through beginning, and that'll begin on January 11th. I think it's the 11th is the first date.
Thank you for that information, Ms. Ote.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Ote. A question that I would, I would ask, with the Common Core, the information that's passed down for the teachers, for the students to get involved in problem solving and reading, mathematics, and what other areas?
Common Core is the reading and the reading and math.
Just reading and math.
The LA math.
The two. As we know, Common Core evolved from a global perspective. In fact, it was referred to as germ, global educational reform movement. So again, I'd be interested in seeing how this is involved and been implemented in those states that have adopted the Common Core process. And of course, Louisiana was one. It wasn't a federal mandate, all the states could participate or not, but if the state said you're participating, our school districts in the state of Louisiana, which is 69 of them, did not have a choice, you had to participate in if I'm, if I'm on the right track. So we want to look at, look at these things carefully and make sure that our students have, have the, the situation that they're exposed to, to come out as well as they can. And of course, sometimes in the ivory towers or those people that's not been in the classroom, they can come up with all kind of good stuff that will be confusing to students. We've seen this, I know I've seen that even in textbooks. And of course, textbooks are usually printed with more than you really need to try to achieve in a segment of a semester or for one, one year. As we look at it, it's those things that you need to know and those things it's nice to know. And we want our students all along to be as functional as possible and those students that's got the capacity for them to move on and do great and wonderful things. And of course, I think this is what St. Bernard Parish has always been about in the last years as we've, as we've moved forward. So we want to continue that, we want to be competitive, but we want a level playing field. We want, we will insist that it be a level, level playing field and that our, our students are treated fairly in the teaching learning process. What comes down to us as a, as a district school system, we don't always have the authority to do things differently, but we do have the authority in the classroom to explain things in such a way that it will evince something that the students can perfect and feel good about themselves. We don't want a trashin' situation to ever occur that you set the bar up here and then they're just below that. And we want it to be realistic in terms for the students' benefits, that they don't want to look at it and say, well, I just, I never be able to do, do this. And that's not, not something we want to be presentable in our teaching learning environment. That's about all I got to say about that. Okay, so I believe we have a motion and we need to vote on that, on this resolution. Thank you for your involvement. Vote your machines.
Motion passes nine zero.
On item nine of the agenda, motion to adopt the 2016-2017 school calendar, and we did have a recommendation from the committee and you have that in your number nine on your, in your folder. I believe we've adopted, or the recommendation is option two, is that right? Okay, if you look at option two and the relation to those, and of course, it's up to the board for the final passage of this. We have a motion by Ms. Asaveta to accept option two, as in the form, second by Ms. Lemoine. Any questions, any statements relative to this? Hearing none, vote your machines.
Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, item 10, motion to approve the bid tabulation for paper cleaning and custodial supplies, and there was a recommendation by the committee. We have a motion. Motion by Mr. Warner that we accept this, and second by Ms. Lemoine. Any questions?
Dr. Craft?
Yes.
Just every bid that we're accepting is the lowest bid, correct, Ms. Blue?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's, that's it. So knowing that, we feel better about voting your machines.
Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, we're down to any items that you'd like placed on the January agenda for the committee meeting. If you know of something now, you can speak, but that would exclude you from coming back and turning it in to Ms. Benazak, items for the January committee meeting.
Dr. Craft?
Ms. Ote, can we get an update on rebuilt website?
Yes.
Okay, we're down to the superintendent's recommendations.
Okay, just at the January 26th, 2016, our 2016 regular monthly school board meeting, we will consider a resolution to call an election to repurpose a currently existing ad valorem millage. And the steps and procedures are included in the information within your packet. And then lastly, we will end, we're in the middle of exams right now and we end Christmas programs and we will end school this Friday and we wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season and looking forward to a very relaxed time with our families and then I'm sure we'll be anxious to see everyone back in the new year.
A brand new year, 2016, who would have thought it? I don't know what happened to 2015. I've still got a few things I need to do, but I think I'll just carry, I'll carry them over to next year. Okay, I think, Mr. Campbell, you're on.
I'm moved, we're here.
Okay, we have a second by Ms. Asaveta. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. We do stand adjourned. The last meeting for the year and we'll see you next year and we hope to see you all at the Christmas party after this.